All right. Welcome to the Rybrook zoning board meeting. Today is March 5th. Welcome. Where you have a board consisting of four of us. Don is absent. So for any approval, we require a vote of three of the four of us. If you would like, any applicant would prefer to wait till we have a full complement of the board, you have the option to request an adjournment to the next meeting, which is held, which is due on April 2nd. But I will advise you that there will only be four of us at that meeting as well. Today, we have, in addition to the members of the board, we have Stephen Fuse, the building inspector, Christian Gates, attorney for the board, and David Heiser, trustee of the village board and liaison to the zoning board. We'll start with item 1.1, item 23-011, 556 Westchester Avenue LLC, to remove the illegal basement apartment legalized as a finished basement with recreation room, bedroom, and bathroom in communication with first floor apartment. Please come to the, for the, when you come to the podium, please identify yourself, your relation to the applicant, and we'll proceed. And please note that we are on video, so we need to make sure that the viewing audience understands and hears what's going on.
I'm Anthony Guastella, and I'm the owner of 556 Westchester Avenue LLC.
Please speak into the mic and a little left.
I'm the owner of 556 Westchester Avenue LLC, Anthony H. Guastella.
Okay. And please present what you are seeking and why.
Well, I've been, I've been following the advice of Mr. Fuse, and it's taken a bit of time, but we're coming along. I have my architect here. I recently sent out pictures to prepare for getting, you know, getting a permit to do work there, to get things up to spec. And we've been doing the work, and I guess the next stage is to get a contractor in there and to get a permit for what you just described would be good.
All right. So the variance is, the maximum allowable gross floor area is 2,332 square feet. You're proposing to remove the illegal basement apartment legalized as a finished basement with recreation room and resulting in a gross floor area of 2,757 square feet. Therefore, you're looking for a variance of 425 square feet. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Can you explain to us the current status and what you're proposing to do?
Well, the current status has, I have a sister-in-law that's been in there for a while. Her husband died the day after, or day before Mr. Fuse came to take a look at the apartment. And I have no resistance on showing the situation and what things had been. And so your question is currently, she'll be out by the end of the month. I made sure that that's been enough time for her to grieve, and she hadn't, really, she has family, and so she'll be able to go there, but she was very happy to be settled there for a while.
But why do you need the variance?
I have a wife who I'm getting a divorce from, and the sister. Would be nice to keep them there, but the variance would be to allow me to do a duplex so that I can utilize the space. You know, a lot of these houses have space that is just not utilized properly.
But you understand that the house is not zoned for, it's currently a two-family house, right?
Right. So if the first floor had children and they needed a place to play, and maybe they had a woman who came to take care of the children and they went to work. I have a couple upstairs that just, you know, by themselves. I'd have to get rid of them in order to utilize that space, but I would like to utilize that space as it's, it's really more than just a basement apartment, as three sides have perfect view of the sky or the stars.
But you understand, though, this cannot be a legal third apartment. So you cannot have a kitchen, and it cannot be rented as an apartment. It can be utilized as, you know, play space, basement space. Most of the houses in Rybrook have basements.
Or should try to turn it into, like you said, an apartment?
A duplex, not as a duplex for the first floor. So the first floor has rental ownership of the basement and use of it, but not as a full apartment, not as a kitchen, say, or...
And does that, does that, is it a basement or first, or a walkout first floor?
It's really like a walkout first floor. From the front, it's the basement. From the back, the ground tilts down.
Have you been using it as a separate entrance?
Yes, there is a separate entrance there.
Okay. And prior to yours, is a sister or sister-in-law moving in there, did you have a tenant in there?
I did, yes.
Okay. So that tenant is, having this as a rental apartment is not going to get approved by this variance.
Okay.
You understand that?
Well, as a rental apartment of an, in...
If it's attached to the first floor apartment, but it cannot be, you're not, we're not, it's not before us, and it's not going to happen that this becomes a third apartment.
Right. Okay. And, but as a duplex, as, you know...
It depends what you have in there. If you have a kitchen in there, you can't do that.
Right.
That's been removed.
If it's simply space, like a rec room or something of that nature, no kitchen...
You can have a bedroom and a bathroom.
Right, yeah. That's one thing, but not as an, not set up as if it's its own apartment.
That's what we have in the drawings at the moment.
Just so I'm clear, this is a two-story structure?
It's actually three.
With a basement.
And a basement.
Three stories?
Yeah, well, the basement, but part of it is on a hill, so it's basically a walkout on the back.
And there are two families in there now?
On the first and the second floor, yes.
Okay. And so the person or family on the first floor, you want to convert or de-convert the apartment on the basement so that what you refer to as a duplex is the first floor and below it, which is the basement or the walkout basement?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, question, though, and I guess this is more towards the architect. Can this be done in a manner that you don't need the variance?
No, because if it's a gross floor variance, it's not a third, it's not a third apartment variance, it's the gross floor. So it's going to become finished space above...
Unless, unless part of it isn't finished.
Right. Steve, is that right? There needs a gross floor because it's above ground?
That's correct. The, so the original status of the, before we discovered the apartment was just an unfinished basement. So I guess at some point, I don't know if it was Mr. Guastella or prior owner, they converted the basement to a finished habitable space without the permit, and that's why he got the violation. The only other option for him would be to return it to an unfinished space if he didn't get this variance.
Okay, so it's because...
Or can you return, again, I don't know if this makes any sense, return part of it to an unfinished space so you don't need the variance?
I'm not sure.
It would meet the...
I don't know, I'm just trying to...
It would meet the square footage.
They'd eliminate the square footage, but I think it's still above ground.
Okay.
In the back.
I was, as a marketer, just to draw it up first, and I didn't realize that there was a zoning issue, and then that's why we have now.
So has, has the kitchen been removed?
No, but I have a contractor, once I get the permit, that if it's important, that it be removed.
Well, I think whether you get the variance or not, I think that kitchen needs to be removed.
Yeah, he can't do any of the demolition until he gets the permit, so that's why he was seeking, the proposal is to remove the kitchen and the cabinets and the countertops.
And that's what we have in the drawing now.
And what's going to be put in that place? I'm looking at the plans here, and it says kitchen cabinetry to remove. Is that just going to be open unfinished space?
Open place space for a family with a couple of kids.
Any more questions from the board? Okay. Anything, any further statements?
I do, by the way, have a precedence of a situation like this where, no, not at this time. Okay.
Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Anybody wishing to speak against? Okay. Then I think I will, and if there are no questions from the board, we can close the public hearing.
Some of, second.
Okay. Comments? Joel?
I mean, I'm trying to look at it, forgetting about the improper apartment as if he simply had an unfinished space, and he wants to turn it into usable space. And what our, what the, our reaction would be to that, which is, I think, how we should be looking at it.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, same, yeah.
I think that, I think that we do have to impose a condition, that it not be turned into an apartment, no kitchen gets reinstalled. I'm sorry?
The kitchen is out.
Okay. But we're going to put that as a condition to the variance, that it not be treated as a rentable, as a separate rental unit.
That is understood.
Do we need to put that as a condition if it's a violation to have a kitchen anyway?
Can't hurt to put it in.
Yeah, I was gonna say can't hurt.
Can't hurt.
Okay. Given the history, I think it's warranted. Okay.
Okay. With that, let me read the resolution. Whereas application has been made to the zoning board by 556 Westchester Avenue, care of Anthony Guastella, for a gross flare, or gross floor area variance in connection with the proposed removal of the illegal basement apartment and legalization as a finished basement with recreation room, bedroom, and bathroom in communication with the first floor apartment, where the maximum allowable gross area, gross floor area is 2,332 square feet, and the proposed project would result in a gross floor area of 2,757 square feet. The application concerns property located at 556 Westchester Avenue in an R2F zoning district on the southwest side of Westchester Avenue, approximately 160 feet from the intersection of Division Street and Westchester Avenue. Said premises being known and designated on the tax map of the Village of Rybrook as parcel ID 135.83-1-43. And whereas the applicant seeks a variance from the Village of Rybrook zoning code 250-25.e, and whereas a duly advertised public hearing was held on January 2nd, 2024, and properly re-noticed and continued on March 5, 2024, at which time the public hearing and the application continued, and all those wishing to be heard were given such opportunity. And whereas the proposed action is a type 2 action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, excuse me, and accordingly, no further environmental review is required. And whereas the board from application, after viewing the premises and neighborhood concern, and upon considering each of the factors set forth in section 250-13G, B2B2A through E of the Rybro code, finds the requested variances, variance will, will not create an adverse impact on the, on the character of the neighborhood? Okay.
We need a pen?
Yeah, please. The benefits the applicant can, cannot be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue. The requested variance is or is not substantial. I think it is.
Is, yeah.
The requested variance will not, will not create any adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Okay? The need for the variance is or is not self-created? Is?
Is.
Is. Okay. Now therefore be it resolved that said application is hereby by, we'll say granted, subject, we'll see with the vote, for the following reasons and upon the following conditions. It's already in here. The basement of the subject premises shall not be used as a dwelling unit unless and until such use is approved by the responsible village authorities, if any. So, and you want to put in no, no kitchen shall be installed?
Yeah.
The kitchen shall be removed and no kitchen will replace it.
Does kitchen have a legal definition for the code?
Cooking.
Kitchen is also defined as a food preparation space, an area where you can food prep. So it doesn't necessarily have to have a stove, but if there's a food prep area, that could be designated as, also as a kitchen.
Oh, thank goodness.
Yeah, because it's kind of hard, you know, without defining kitchen, because I know that there was something recently that I was reading about that, that the only requirement that they could not have that made it a, I don't know, a kitchen or something, was a stove. And so without the stove, you could have everything else, but I'm not sure where I...
Yeah, that's why they took that out and they said food, so if you have a countertop and a sink, because someone could always, you know, put a hot plate there.
Do you want to replace it with cooking appliances, shall not be?
I would, I would include the countertop and cabinets. Cabinetry also must not be put back.
Well, they're going to have counters. Everybody has counters. Well, there's a sink there now.
Does that theoretically mean he could not have a wet bar?
No, because there's a, I gotta put in the countertop, because you're not...
Right, but you could have a sink, I would think.
Yeah, and you have a sink, and it's already in the plan.
Right, right, okay.
Okay. Glenn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Yes, Steve, yes, and Don is excused. So for a, for a, and one excused, congratulations. You have, you have to pull the permit within six months and subject to continued inspection by the building inspector. Thank you. Next item is ZBA 24-001, Joseph Robert Coppola Living Trust, 539 Westchester Avenue, legalize additions and alterations to a detached garage, new dormer and attic to facilitate workshop with exterior wood stairs to grade, installation of mechanical equipment to heat garage and removal or covered floating deck. And note that there are five variances sought in this matter. Minimum required setback for detached accessory building, minimum required setback from both the rear property and side property setback. Building coverage is 5.9, 5% over 5% that's allowed. Maximum allowable height for accessory building is one story. The garage that currently exists, which the applicant seeks to legalize as one and a half stories, requiring a one-half story variance. And minimum distance between the main building and a detached accessory building is 12 feet. The garage deck, which applicant seeks to legalize, was constructed 3 and 1/2 feet from the main building, thereby requiring a variance of 8 and 1/2 feet.
Not the most variances I've ever got.
Not, or it is?
What?
You say not?
Not, not.
Okay, well, you can work, you can strive for better.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not striving to ever beat that one. Okay, so we're here...
Please introduce yourself for the audience.
I'm Gaji Scola Jr., architect for Mr. Coppola, who is in the audience. So, okay, so this is a detached garage that was built with a building permit in 1952. And according to the building permit, it was three feet off the property line. It doesn't mention how far up the house it was, and it was one and a half stories on the building permit. So as you know, this is a unique lot. It's a flag lot on Westchester Avenue. It's setback, it's actually two flag lots or, there's another house behind it on the flag on the driveways next to it. So this is kind of a unique site as far as setbacks and as far as the house being built behind it. So let's, I mean, let's start with the picture. So that's the existing garage, and this is the house, and it's a two, it's a, it's a one and a half story, so there is space on the second floor of the garage that's like storage and kind of a workshop. And it has a stairway going up to it. So it's, it's close to the house, and it's, it kind of is what it, what it is. That's something else. So this is the stairway going up. That's the other side of the garage, and that's actually the driveway going to the house that's actually flagged behind this one. And that's looking at it from kind of where the house is coming up the driveway. So it's kind, it's like a one and a half dormer garage, so that's what it looks like.
You said that was built legally back in the 50s?
It has a building permit, so it was built. The village permit says one and a half story, when now accessory buildings are only one story and 15 feet. So...
Why isn't that grandfathered in then?
Well, it has a permit. It never got a CO.
Hmm.
So when the owner was trying to wreck, you know, try to kind of get the property card kind of like in line, it was brought up that it doesn't have a CO. Has a permit, but there's no record of a CO. So, so it could have had a CO, there's just no record of a CO. So we're kind of in the position we're in now, where it has a permit from 1952, which is older than...
Different owner, I presume, or?
It was, it was, it was two owners ago. So if you look at the...
Title company should have picked it up.
If you look at the plot of this...
So in any of the transactions, the title company never brought up the fact that it didn't have a CO?
Actually, I thought like twice I bought the house.
Please come to the mic so people can hear you.
When I initially bought the house in 1979, I had a title searched on a bank mortgage inspection. That never came up. And then when I got divorced in 82, I had to buy the house again with another title search and another bank mortgage inspection, and it never came up again. And I had been calling the building department over the years, and the records were not, they couldn't find the records until everything got digitized. So this just came to light this past year, 2023.
Well, that's helpful information. Thank you.
Okay, so, so it has a permit, it's kind of wedged in the back corner of the property. So...
So none of these variances are newly created? They're all pre-existing going back to 52 or so?
They're all, they're all pre-ex, they look like they're all pre-existing.
Yeah, I mean, there was the half story that was added, you know...
One dormer piece.
Right.
That was before you bought the house, is that correct?
Well, that was right after I got the house.
So you put the dormer up?
I'll relay the story of how I went, and it was done in 1982. I had gone to the building department to meet the inspector, and I sat with him, and I asked, what do I need to do to put this back dorm around? I already have one in the front, I just want to put a simple dormer in the back. And it sounds weird, but he put a piece of paper in front of me, asked me to draw out what I wanted to do, and I did, and he said, okay, go ahead and let me know when you're done. It was very casual back then.
Well, I mean, 1982, wasn't Rybrook founded in 1982?
Yeah.
So nobody knew what they were doing then.
And then when I finished, I called, and I said, I'm all done, do you want to come and look at it? He goes, no, you're, you're all set. And I didn't, of course, get a piece of paper saying that's exactly what the deal was, so... My fault.
No, not seriously. You tried.
Still have that drawing or no?
I had architectural graphing and book reading in high school. I was able to give a three-sided drawing right in front of him. And I wish I knew, I remember his name, I'm sure he did, retired.
I would think Sari's probably retired.
Or fired.
I guess so.
Okay. So we're here tonight for five variances. So two is for, for an accessory building is supposed to be five feet off the property line, and this one is 3.6 off the two sides. So we need a 1.46 for the rear, we need a 1.46 for the right side. And the permit said it was supposed to be three feet off the property line, so it's actually a little further off the property line than in theory the permit said it was, but it still doesn't meet code. The maximum allowable accessory building coverage is 5%, and this is a 5.95, so we need a 0.95% for the coverage of an accessory building. The maximum allowable height for an accessory building is one story, and we're one and a half, so we need a half a story on the height. And an accessory building is supposed to be 12 feet from the principal dwelling, and we're at 3.5 feet, so we need 8.5 feet.
Hey, Steve, do you, if this was all done in 80, 79, 82, or 52, or whatever, I mean, when was Ry, was Rybrook Village zoning code adopted? After that, right?
Yeah, it was after that, I think, in the, in the early, in the early 80s. But at that time, you needed the five feet, you needed the 12 feet distance.
So that part of the zoning code did exist back in the 82?
Yeah.
But not in 52? 52, where there was no...
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look at 52, but I didn't think it was as stringent in 52.
So, so that's what we're here for, for the five variances on something that's been there pretty much since 1952.
If Rybrooks was incorporated in 82, so 52, they would have been following...
Rye.
Rye.
Yeah, the town of Rye.
Rye.
Town of Rye.
I got nothing to ask. I got nothing to say.
I'm very disappointed you don't have that drawing, but other than that...
And Jamie?
No.
Okay. Anybody, would anybody from the audience like to speak in favor of the application? Anybody opposed? Okay. Move, close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion from the board here?
No.
Nothing.
Yeah.
It's unusual.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
Nothing today.
All right. Let me read the resolution. Whereas application has been made to the zoning board by the Joseph Robert Coppola Living Trust for five variances in connection with the proposed legalization of additions and alterations to a detached garage, new dormer and attic to facilitate workshop with exterior wood stairs to grade, installation of mechanical equipment to heat garage and removal of covered floating deck structure on property located at 539 Westchester Avenue in an R2F zoning district on the north side of Westchester Avenue, approximately 250 feet from the intersection of Hawthorne Avenue and Westchester Avenue. Said premises being known and designated on the tax map of the Village of Rybrook as parcel ID 135.84-1-7. And whereas the applicant seeks the following variances, I'm going to go through these shorthand. A variance for setback for detached, or rear yard setback, a variance of 1.4 feet, the side yard setback, a variance of 1.4 feet, for maximum allowable building coverage of 0.95%. Allowable height for an accessory building, needing a one-half story variance, and the minimum distance between the main building and detached accessory building is supposed to be 12 feet, and we needing a variance, requesting a variance of 8.5 feet. Whereas duly advertised public hearing was held on March 5, 2024, at which time, all those wishing to be heard were given such opportunity. And whereas the proposed action is a type 2 action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and accordingly, no further environmental review is required. Whereas the board from the application, after reviewing the premises and neighborhood concerned, and upon considering each of the factors set forth in section 250-13G, 2B2A through E of the Rybro code, finds the requested variance will not create an adverse impact on the neighborhood. The benefits the applicant seek cannot be achieved through any other means. The requested variances are or not substantial.
Are.
Are substantial. The requested variances will not create any adverse impacts to the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Need for variances are or not self-created? They are not.
Well, in part, the back dormer. One was.
So given that...
Mostly not.
Okay, well, I know. And you want to specify that four are not, and one is? But the dormer is not, the dormer would just be for the allowable height.
Right, but if there was a, if the front dormer was already there, would that have been a violation of variance, forgetting about the back dormer?
Did you put in the, you just put in the front dormer?
Back dormer was original.
Yeah, so I think it would have been a variance anyway.
Right, so not create, not...
Okay. Any conditions?
He's not allowed to use it as an apartment, correct? Or is that, is there, is there any, is that permitted or no?
I don't think it's permitted. It's an accessory building.
Yeah, it's an accessory building. I mean, it is heated, he has installed heat there. There's no plumbing, other than the gas heating.
Not a kitchen?
No kitchen.
No bathroom?
No bathroom.
So it can't be an accessory until you add that, it's not going to be an apartment anywhere. Okay, Glenn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Steve, yes. Okay, congratulations, your variance is approved. Thank you. You know, Christian, I didn't... You know, Christian, I didn't sign the other one. Any other, did any, no other business before the board?
We have the minutes to approve, or?
I don't think we got them.
Wasn't on the agenda.
Wasn't on the agenda.
No.
Thanks, Jim. Motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second. So moved. Meeting is adjourned.